Hey Carrie.
Hi, who are you?
Hi. Do I have to open my video or do you do that?
You do.
Let's see now.
I'm asking you to start your video.
Yes, I see it. There I am.
No, you're there.
Yeah, no, that's what I just said. There I am. Thank you. Hi, Joe. Who else is there? Hi Liz.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Hi Barbara.
Hi Barbara.
Hi, everybody. Does anybody know if the 917 number is any of our members? It's a 917-992-9765.
I don't know it.
I don't know it.
Tim, do you have your email up right now?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Just hold on one minute.
What do you want me to do?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to send you something.
Oh.
I sent you something, Tim.
Yeah, I got it. Let me see. I'm glad we're not in a live meeting.
We are right now. We're on.
I mean, all in one room.
Yeah, we're on YouTube. We're already live streaming on YouTube right now.
Yes. But I mean, we don't have to worry about anyone attacking us.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about. Nobody else does.
Exactly.
Okay, two minutes and counting, but nobody else is here.
Unless this 917 number is somebody. I guess I could let them in and see who it is.
Everybody's 917 on cells out here.
I know. I let the person in, so.
Oh, I know who that is. That's someone from Safestak Harbor.
Okay.
Observing.
Okay.
Welcome to Safestak Harbor if you can hear me.
I don't see anybody else that were waiting.
Well, we're almost ready for liftoff. Hey, did you see the, that rocket go into space? The Tesla rocket?
No.
Elon Musk's company sent four astronauts up to join the existing space station up there. But, I mean, would you go into outer space in a Tesla previously untested by humans? I wouldn't. NASA hired them to transport the astronauts.
I have Alex, Scott.
Oh, okay, great.
Just don't see Susan yet.
I talked to her this afternoon. She's definitely planning to attend. Hi Alex.
How you doing, Tim?
Great, thanks. Hi Scott.
Hello, how are you?
Welcome. I'm well, thanks. There we go. Seems good. Just waiting for Susan and then we'll get started.
Oh, good.
That's Susan. I'm letting, I'm letting another phone number in. I don't know if that's her.
Good evening.
Hello.
Oh, Ham's not here either.
No, but I don't see him yet. Unless is this him?
I'll look up his phone number.
Ham, is that you?
No, this, this 917, this is, my name is Tom Gannon for the 312 Madison matter at the top of the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Tom.
Thank you.
Ham is 6671.
Okay, I'm just gonna.
He's a 757 cellphone.
We can probably. Do you wanna wait for everybody or?
Well, we have a quorum. We could go through the preliminaries and let them in as they join us. How's that sound, Carrie?
Okay, I'm admitting everybody into the meeting right now, so.
Okay, you good to go, Carrie? Yes?
Yep, everybody.
Okay, and you'll let Ham and Susan in when they show up?
Yeah, I haven't seen them yet.
Okay, welcome to the November 17th, 2020 meeting in Sec Harbor Zoning Board of Appeals. If everyone would please stand, we'll say the pledge of allegiance. Carrie, do you give us a flag?
Yep.
Thank you.
Just give me one minute.
We'll start without it and then catch up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the united states, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and honor. Thank you. May I get a motion from our three members to open the meeting?
So moved.
I second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
So just a couple of notes before we get started. We're missing two members who are going to join us. Susan and Ham, and we'll let them in as soon as they get here. For those people who might have zoomed in to listen to one particular application. We have five different applications that we're not gonna hear tonight. They've been adjourned at the request of the applicant. I'm gonna go over those now, so that if you're here from the public to listen to them and you're not interested in the rest, you can zoom out. As we come to each one, though, I will ask for a formal motion to adjourn it. So among the prior applications carried over to this meeting, there are four that are being adjourned. The first is 110 Division. The second is 70 Glover Street. The third is 29 Cornell. And the fourth is 24 Ryssum. Among the new applications being presented for the first time tonight, there's one requested adjournment, and that is 30 John Street. So that's for the benefit of the public. You can zoom out if you were interested in only in one of those. So moving on, could I get a motion to approve our minutes from the October 20th meeting?
Also moved.
A second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Hi Susan.
Hi.
Hello.
Item number four, we have correspondence from Jennifer Tierney at 312 Madison Street. This is a request to extend her variance in the building permit for one year because they have not completed the project. A lot of these are being delayed because of the pandemic, and we typically grant them. So could I get a motion to grant this extension?
Still moved.
Madison.
Second. Who made the motion?
I still moved, Alex.
And second?
Susan.
Okay, great. All favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the carried over applications. The first one is 110 Division Street. Could I get a motion to adjourn at the request of the applicant until our next meeting?
I still move.
Second?
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
The next application is 70 Glover Street. Could I get a motion to adjourn that at the request of the applicant?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor, aye.
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 The next is 29 Cornell Road. Could I get a motion to adjourn that application until the next meeting?
I'll move.
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
And now get ready, because this one is live. 205 Division Street.
Hold on one moment. I think this might be him calling me. Nope. Hold on, I don't see him on.
I think this got carried over, I think only because the applicant wasn't, wasn't at the last meeting, right?
We didn't have the proper documents, so.
We're waiting for a server, yeah. Have we gotten that?
Yes, I sent that to you guys.
That's right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So is he there?
I don't see him unless.
Well, maybe we'll move on and we can come back if he should show up.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna leave it open. I won't ask for an adjournment. We'll see if he shows up. 24 Ryssum Street, may I get a motion to adjourn that at the request of the applicant?
I'll move.
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, 152 Hampton Street.
And that's Dennis Downs and Mr. Loffler is here too. Dennis, I'm asking you to unmute.
Thank you. Dennis Downs, 34 Bay Street, Sec Harbor, New York, attorney for the applicant. Mr. Loffler is also on the Zoom meeting. At last month's meeting, you had some concerns about the amount of the pyramid. So Carrie, could you put up on the screen the revised site plan that shows the, that addition being moved to the south to increase the side yard so that there's no side yard variance? And it reduced the pyramid?
Yes, just hold on one moment. Do you see it?
No.
No, it just says scans.
There we go.
That's it. So, no, this is not very good, but, um, let's see.
I can. I can zoom it.
Yeah, could you go to this area right here? You'll see where we're 16.7 feet now from the side block line.
It won't let me zoom with you guys with.
Well, when you finally get your own copy of this version, you'll see it's 16.7 feet to the new building. The addition, and it's about 18.1 feet on the, let's see, that would be the east end. So we've eliminated that side yard variance, and in doing so, we've eliminated, Steve, if you're online, can you, if you're on the Zoom, can you give me the amount of the square footage that we've eliminated in the pyramid?
The, we eliminated over 500 cubic feet, 34%.
Is, is Steve under oath from another meeting?
Yes, from the last meeting. We can put him under oath again if you'd like.
No, he's under oath. So, so what is the new, there's 3,561 existing.
No, no, that was changed. That was, that was an inconsistency from 2017, so the total, the total, well, right now we're asking for an additional 981.6 as opposed to almost 1,500 cubic feet. And the total of the non-conformances, 2,853.
What happened to the 3,561?
When I brought it back to the engineer, he recalculated it and.
So we don't have any of this, right? This is a.
Oh, no, this was all submitted.
It's been submitted. You may not have it yet. I don't know if Carrie was able to get it out to you.
This, this is the latest thing that was submitted?
It came through as an email. I mean, I printed it out, but it was an email, PDF. The two.
I brought these all in over a week ago.
It was sent, it was sent to you guys all, I believe, on the 10th.
And Steve, you did file the hard copies, correct?
Yes, I have the hard copies.
Bear with me and, and repeat the, the existing pyramid variance.
The, the, I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean.
986 plus what's the, the pyramid violation that's already in existence?
The pyramid violation that's already in existence is 1871 cubic feet.
Okay.
And the new is 981.6.
That, the, the total of the new is 2853.6.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, what we're asking for additional is 981.6.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay. And again, that's down from the 1,500.
Got it. Okay, well, that's progress. Are there questions from the board?
Yeah, I have, I have several. It's also my understanding you're asking for a use change from one non-conforming use to another?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, the, the non-conforming use would be, we have a, well, it's really a conforming use at this point because it's retail, it's a office. And that was a variance that was granted some time ago to use the ground floor for offices. We're asking to go from offices to, to one or more retail spaces on the ground floor depending upon what the market will dictate.
And that's, yeah, and that's increasing the, that's increasing the parking requirement?
No, it stays the same because an office and, and a, and a retail store are one for 200 square feet.
Okay, so when you mean retail, you, you don't mean, for example, a convenience store or something like that?
No, no, we, we submitted a list of, from the Village Code of the, of the retail stores that we thought would be compatible with this particular piece of property.
Okay.
And we were asking for several of those, just like we did with the store at the corner of Jermaine and, Jermaine and Madison, I think it is.
Right.
The old Kathy Munston building where you allowed several different retail uses so that they wouldn't have to keep coming back to you.
Right. Well.
We've, we, we, we identified several that would be available, that would, we thought was conducive to a retail store in that area for the board to review and approve or disapprove.
Okay, can you take me through, and I'm terribly sorry to do this to you, Dennis, but I find this application, what you've done is bifurcated. Basically, you went through in 2017 and got part of it, and now you've come back with the rest of it. It would have been a lot simpler if it all been done at once, but it didn't, it wasn't. So I've gone back through the file. I went in for the last meeting and pulled the file. And there's a memo to the planning department that talks about the, the lack of supporting documentation for your grandfathered parking rights. Can you explain, please, why, one more time, I think you have the non-conforming rights you do?
I spoke to Kathy Eisman during the week, and I think she put it in her last report to the, to the planning board.
Well, we don't get.
Yeah, I know you don't get them. So anyway, but I can get you her report. And basically what she's saying is the grandfathered spaces are, are reduced by only one more, one parking space because the, the operation there was always a one-man operation. When Macary owned the building, he was, he was a, a one-man, what do you call it, plumber? Then after him came a guy that was stripping furniture.
When you went from a plumbing store when it was taken to a warehouse, which it was for years, and that's all it was, you don't retain those grandfathered rights?
Yes, you do. You've always retained them in Sec Harbor. The, when Macary owned the building, he was a one-man operation. He didn't have a store, and he just, he just warehoused plumbing supplies. And he worked out of that building. And then the guy that came after him was a, he stripped furniture, and he was a one-man operation. And then Ike was a one-man operation. So when, when Kathy Eisman computed the, the square footage of the, of the area that was allowed for parking but was never used for parking, she then said you have to deduct at least one parking space for the person that would show up at the place every day to work. So I said, fine, I think that's reasonable, you know, a reasonable deduction. So even with that, we're still okay on parking based on the square footage of the building.
Do, Liz, do you have a copy of the planning board memo?
No, we have to request that. We're still missing the secret for this application anyway. So we need the planning board memo from Kathy that states that, and then also the secret has to be completed.
Working on that for next week's meeting.
Great. Oh, why are we voting on this now?
You can't vote on this now. You're, you're hearing this continued application and this continued hearing, but you cannot act on this application until secret is complete.
Right, I agree, Liz. We have to wait for secret to be complete before you can act. But you're, you're allowed to hear it.
Hear it and consider it, yeah. And hear from the public on it as well.
Right, and we've been trying to accommodate the concerns that the board has had.
Sure. I would like to see the, I would like to see the memo from Kathy on the parking. I would also like to know what the results were when the Department of Transportation was asked about putting retail on this site. I believe the response was they had concern that if retail went on the site, then people would park along the roadway, along 114, which was not something I agree with. So I'd like to see the historical response to that question that was asked a number of years ago.
Okay, Ms. Mead, is, is there a memo from the New York State DOT? Because we have an approval letter from them.
Approval level for retail?
For the offices.
Well, that's different.
We have to still go back to them and see if they wanna change their approval.
They, they, no, I'm not talking about office. I'm talking about retail.
No, no, I know that. From, if we go from some retail to office, we have to go back to the New York State DOT and show them that approval or that proposal and see if they wanna change their approval for our, for the office facility.
So you haven't done that yet, so you're asking us to approve retail before DOT is.
No, it'll always be subject to DOT approval. We don't get DOT approval. We're not going anywhere with the project. We're not allowed to drive onto the site.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's the apple before the egg on, I mean, it's the egg before the chicken and all these things. You know, you gotta get one, one thing done before you can go to the next. And the DOT and Health Department have always been at the end.
Well, but DOT was asked this question regarding retail years ago, so.
I don't recall that, but I'll, I'll, I'll go through the records and see if I can find the letter where they made a comment. Well, actually, what we'll do is we'll just submit this plan to them and ask them if they have another comment. Might be easier to do that.
I could do that, Dennis, because I have, I have the no objection letter from the New York State Department of Transportation with reference to the last site plan.
All right, so now we just give them the new site plan and see if they have any objection or concerns? And if they can write directly to the, to the ZBA about it.
I'll get it out tomorrow.
Is that okay, Ms. Mead?
Yeah, but I'd still like the historical. Uh, yeah, but I'd still like the historical letter, because I think they'd need to give us a similar letter.
Right, I'll, I'll try and dig out that letter. I just don't recall it.
Um, Dennis, I have the, I have the entire file that Tom Priato sent me going back to 19, um-
All right, you and I, let's not discuss it now. You and I will go over it tomorrow and, uh, because we don't want to waste the board's time.
Okay.
Okay, just to-
Dennis, oh, Dennis, can I ask just a question? I, I was just looking through to find the, um, the list of retail. And is that, is that the, uh, it's like three or four pages where you've crossed out certain things?
Yes, we crossed out items we felt weren't, weren't, weren't appropriate.
Okay, so it's all the remaining items is what you might consider. Okay, gotcha.
Well, you might consider. I mean, it's-
Right, right.
You make the decision. You know, if you don't like a haberdashery store, it could be something different. T-shirts or whatever it may be, you know?
Right.
That's wrong.
Is everyone okay with the pyramid and with the, now that we, we don't have a side yard problem anymore?
Yes, I am.
I, I am also.
Carrie, can you let in Ham?
I let, he's in.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm sorry I'm late. I had difficulty getting in.
Okay.
Let's see if, uh, if there's anyone from the public that would like to ask questions. We're going to adjourn this, but let's see that first. Is there anyone from the public that wants to, uh, make a comment on 152 Hampton Street?
I have a Samantha. Hi, Samantha.
Hi, how are you? Um, I was wondering, is this the time where we could voice our opinion in general, or, or just just asking questions?
Either.
Either. All right, well, good evening. Um, I just have a quick statement I wanted to read.
Uh, are you an attorney? Are you an attorney?
No.
Can we have to swear you in, please? Could you raise your right hand? Do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening.
Okay, so could you give us, give us your name and your address for our record?
Sure. Samantha Paliam.
No, don't, don't worry, I'll call you back.
And I live at 147 Hampton Street.
Okay, thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Samantha Paliam, and I'm a current full-time resident of Sag Harbor. I've lived here for the past two and a half years, and I've worked at Stony Brook Southampton Hospital for the past four. Since purchasing my home, I've made every effort to restore the charm of my historical home as the fitting of being in historic district. One of the main reasons I moved to Sag Harbor was because of its small village charm. Living in a historic district comes with certain understood responsibilities. From what I've read, the proposed adjustments do not coincide with those responsibilities or the charm of the small village. Unfortunately, a 24-hour gas station and mini-mart was allowed to be installed with a non-stop compressor in this neighborhood already. It's situations like this that need to be avoided in the future. The historic district is a very important part of Sag Harbor, and although it appears as if some mistakes have been made in the past, it doesn't need the, mean they need to continue. Hampton Street is already an extremely busy road, not only in the summer, but year-round, in part due to the 24-hour gas station. Building a large retail building directly next door would only o- add to the traffic and take away from the feel of the neighborhood. I understand the importance of new business in Sag Harbor. However, it is vital that they follow the rules that have been set forth defining the area. If outrageous variances are continuously granted in this village, then one must wonder, "Why do we have them at all?" It appears the path in which we're headed is going to destroy the charms, not only the historic district, but of Sag Harbor itself. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I sincerely hope you consider my opinion. I understand that Sag Harbor is mainly a summer community, and in particular, this neighborhood. And although the voices of full-time residents may be small in number, it doesn't mean they're any less important.
Okay, thank you. We'll certainly take your comments into effect, but, um, you, you observed when you bought your home that there was a large, empty, uh, establishment, a retail establishment, right there, correct?
A warehouse there, yes.
Right, so you knew that it was going to be something commercially oriented?
Not retail stores. That completely changes it. That increases traffic.
Okay, well, I'll just observe. It's had several uses over the years since it was built. Any, in any case, we will take your comments into account.
May I ask you a question? Ms. Pullman, are you north or south of, uh, the building?
I'm right across-
Going towards East Hampton or towards Sag Harbor?
Directly across the street.
Directly across the street?
Yes.
Um, I don't believe you're in the historic district, but I may be wrong. I'll have to verify.
I am.
We're not. The subject property's not in the historic district. But anyway, that, it's another issue.
Can I ask how that's relevant, Dennis, whether-
Well, she raised the fact that it was, uh, that it was affecting the historic district, and I don't think it does.
It's right next door to it. It's the neighborhood.
Right next door is a, uh, a gas station and a private residence, and the private residence has given us a letter saying they have no objection. As have-
I'm right across the street, and I'm, I'm raising my objection.
Okay, you, you certainly-
Well, let's not, let's not debate this, Dennis, um, you guys are right to her opinions, and we're going to take them into account. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak to this? Okay, then, can I get a motion to adjourn this to our next meeting while we wait for the secret determination from the planning board?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And for the record, the next meeting is December 15th. Who seconded this?
Uh, Alex.
Can I ask a question? I know that we just adjourned this. Are, are we going to specifically go through each of the, um, there are a lot of, um, retail, um, choices here. Are we going to go through those each specifically?
Why don't we, uh, why don't I suggest that everyone look them over, um, between now and the next meeting, and we can, if this comes up, because we have the secret, we'll, we'll take it up, and if there's discussion about them, we can do that at that meeting?
That, that sounds fine. I just was wondering how we were going to deal with it, because it's a long, long list.
Yeah, I, I think let's do everything that's remaining whenever the secret comes back. Okay, next, uh, is 31 Long Island Avenue. Backs Enterprises.
Dennis Downs, attorney for the applicant. So, um, I'm going to make this brief tonight, because really all I want to discuss with you is the real lot line. Um, I, I did a, um, I got, um, an amended site plan tonight with the parking issue that is conforms to what Kathy Eisman, uh, wrote within the last past week. So I will, uh, address that next month. But as far as the real lot line is concerned, I think, uh, Mr. McGuire, you had a concern. Um, so I had the surveyor, um, show the prior building, the proposed building, and the difference between the two. And, um, Carrie, do you have that email?
Dennis, when did you send that?
Uh, Hem is supposedly sent it sometime this afternoon. I've got it here if you can-
I did-
Let's discuss that neck, at the next meeting.
I did not get that.
That's fine, I can do that, not a problem.
But just to repeat my point, so you can mull it over, Dennis, my point was that when you expand it, I believe you lose the grandfathering, uh, of that setback. In other words, when you go from one, one floor to two floors, you have to reapply for that setback. Just mull that over.
We did reapply for it.
That's what you're doing here, I know.
The difference in square footage, just so you want to mull it over for next month, is between the old building and the new building, it's 141 square feet.
In footprint, but not in, uh, gross floor area.
Footprint, so it would be 282 in square feet. But anyway, it's, it's not, we'll talk about it next month. I don't want to, I don't want to waste-
That's fine, that's fine. Could I get a motion to, uh, adjourn 31 Long Island Avenue until the next meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, 60 Hempstead Street.
And for the record, the next meeting is December 15th.
Okay, Dennis Downs, attorney for the applicant, 60 Hempstead Street. Um, I believe at last month's meeting, it was a concern that, um, on the second-story deck, you'd be looking down into the neighbor's property. And my, my client, Mr. Schechter, uh, submitted surveys in the last two weeks, not surveys, uh, pl- uh, so, uh, pictures, showing how screened his property is from the next-door neighbor. You can't see down into that, into the neighbor's yard, uh, or the deck that they have on the back of their house.
That wasn't our only concern.
Well, other than the fact that they built it without a permit, correct?
No, well, not even that. We had a concern about the setbacks on the patios, and also the increasing of the lot coverage on a lot that looks pretty filled out as it is.
Well, you know, the problem we got with lot coverage is we're to, we're dealing with 20,000-square-foot zoning against a 5,000-square-foot lot.
Here's what happened at the last meeting. Um, we gave the applicant an indication that he was probably not going to get a favorable ruling, and we asked him whether he wanted to withdraw and think about some other solution to what he's doing, or did he want us to just take a vote? And he suggested, um, that he withdraw it and think about it and come back. So I just want you to know the history of this.
All right, I'd rather adjourn it one more month bef- because he didn't say to me anything about withdrawing. Um, and I, I don't want to, um-
Well, he may not have fully understood the, uh, alternatives that we were offering him.
Right.
Uh, our suggest, our suggestion was to make the rear, eliminate the, the lot coverage issue by just having gravel instead of the patio, and then make his roof deck smaller, and then he doesn't need any variance.
That was our suggestion, that's correct.
I mean, the roof then comes out of a master bedroom, so it's not like it's going to be a party place up there. It's going to be-
We're having a problem with it, Dennis. That's what we said to him, so if you'd like to adjourn it-
Yeah, let me adjourn it so I can, uh, get his understanding of what, um, what he thought you said. Okay, thank you.
Right, so could I get a motion to adjourn 60 Hempstead Street?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next, Four Horizon Drive.
Hi, Shannon.
Good evening. Um, so, since our last meeting, I spoke to my client, and, um, last time, we were trying to figure out how the deck showed up without any building permits, and he, um, let me know that, that the deck was built after the CO was issued. Um, at the time, it was his father living in the house, and after a few months of living in the house, he, um, wanted a back deck to be able to go sit down. And so he went down and talked to Eugene Pizzo and what permits were going to be needed, and at the time, Eugene told him that if it's within 12 inches of grade, that he wouldn't have required a permit. Um, and so unfortunately, he didn't have any written documents about that, but that's, and since then, they haven't done anything that would require a building permit, and so that's why it's not being-
Right. Okay, and there was a letter to that effect, and, uh, our building inspector, um, didn't have any argument with the content of the letter. Um, and that was the memory of several of us, too, that at that time, uh, a permit was not required. So I thought that the indication that we gave was that we didn't have a problem with him rebuilding the existing deck, but that a couple of us did have a problem with expanding it. If somebody on the board has a different memory of that, um, please chime in.
That, that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, um, and so, yeah, he wanted, he thought, like, maybe if he could prove of why it was there, you, you would be able to grant the expansion since it was legally there, and so I did discuss with him about a different alternative, um, layout to the deck, and so the second, this project is kind of twofold. Right now, in their dining room, it's double-hung windows, and they want to switch it to French doors to the back of the property. And so they were wondering if, since now it's a 13-by-22 deck, if they would be able to shift it, that 7.8 feet, towards the northeast, and keep that footprint, and then just do a walkway from where the existing door is now in the kitchen.
So what would the setback be then?
It would still remain the 19.7 feet setback that we're requesting right now. Um, am I able to share my screen?
It's really just shifting it towards the, um, the Bilco door area?
Yes, exactly.
There you go, Shannon.
Okay.
But it's the same proposal?
It would be, no, it would be the same deck. They're just shift the deck over so it comes out where the doors would exit from the dining room onto it, which they don't now.
You say the same deck, Scott. You mean the same deck that is there shifted?
Correct. Not enlarged, but the same-sized deck rebuilt.
And not elevated?
N- no, would be, well, I'm assuming they would keep it identical and just shift it over, correct?
They would still want it elevated to the first-floor deck, and so, um, I shared my screen, so the blue dash line is what's existing at grade right now. And so, towards the five feet, there's a, just like a 30-inch door that exits out to the deck currently. And so, they would like to shift the deck, because right about here is where they would be putting the French doors. And so that way, they could have the deck the same square footage.
Excuse me, are you moving it from the Bilco door?
Closer to the Bilco door.
Closer to the Bilco door.
So basically, you're elevating the deck, putting in French, French doors. Um, I don't understand why it has to be elevated if you're putting in French doors.
Because it, the back, the front, it, there's, um, a grade cha- a drop. It's about a few steps down right now. And, and-
And just, just to be clear, you're saying that you're, you're, you are expanding the deck, but you're expanding it northward towards the, uh, cellar door, not outwards towards the side yard fence?
Well, it was never encroaching closer to the side yard. You, because in the last meeting, you guys said this footprint wasn't an issue, the 13-by-22, and so-
Right.
The client is trying to put in the French doors to be able to walk out onto the deck at the same elevate, first-floor elevation.
So Alex, if I understand it correctly, they're taking the existing deck, 13-by-22, and moving it over and elevating it a foot and a half or two feet?
Yes.
I got you, and, and, and they're, and they're, the reason they're not expanding the size of it is because they're basically replacing much of that section that was there with stairs, right? Because didn't it-
Well, so, because right now, the footprint is the 13-by-22, and so we are just asking to be able to put the stairs on the side.
Right.
He's expanding.
The layout.
That's, there's an extension now.
So the stairs are an expansion?
The stairs would be considered an expansion, yes, but not actual deck.
That's, that's what I was getting at. That's my thought. Thank you.
So the stairs will go onto gravel or, or grass?
They would just go down to grade on the grass, yeah.
Tim, I don't know if you're soliciting comments, but I'm, I'm generally pretty comfortable with this, only because of the circumstances of the, of the original deck. Um, uh, you know, him seeking permission, being told-
Yeah, let's ask, let's see if there's anyone from the public that's speaking to this, and then we'll take comment from the board. We can adjourn the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that, uh, wants to speak to Four Horizon Drive? Expanding a, a deck? No, okay. So could I get a motion then to, uh, if there, are there any other questions from the board before we close the public hearing?
Well, I just had one, is we will need a new survey that shows exactly what you're going to do if we're going to approve or-
Do you want me to adjourn until the next meeting and submit survey?
Well, I don't know, I just raised, I just raised that question for-
I, I-
Well, look, maybe we could have a, uh, a discussion and give some indication of what our thinking is, and then adjourn it just for the purposes of getting a revised survey that shows, uh, what's going to happen. Does that sound okay to everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so Alex has indicated he's okay with it, um-
Well, yeah, I'd just say my, my reasons are just that they're, they're not, you know, the original deck, they saw permission, they were told they didn't need it, they built it, they're not expanding outward, they're not, uh, decreasing the setback. Uh, they're only expanding the size along the house. So it seems like a pretty de minimis expansion and, and a reasonable one based on their needs.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I concur with him. I, I did not object to the deck, uh, at the last meeting, and the fact that they compromised and moved the deck over to the, um, the Bilco door, and I don't see any, they have compromised, and I accept their, their compromise.
Okay, anyone else want to comment from the board?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't either, especially since the expansion is really a staircase. It's not-
Right.
going to create more, uh, noise or anything. It's just a staircase.
Yeah, and I don't think it has a negative impact on any of the neighbors. Um, so let's, uh, get a motion then to adjourn to the next meeting, uh, waiting for the revised survey that'll confirm this, um, and then we'll have a formal vote at the next meeting.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Ms. McCaffrey. Um, next, 8 Dartmouth Road.
Hi, Brian.
Good evening, members of the board. Brian DeSessa, 2462 Main Street.
Good evening, members of the board. Brian De Sessa, 2462 Main Street, Suite 7, Bridgehampton, New York. Attorney for the applicant. When we were here last month, the board had asked for some additional information. They had asked for a dimensioning of the deck and a set of floor plans for the interior of the house. All those have been submitted to the village. I could screen share, I could pull those up and walk the board through them and answer any questions that, that are pertinent to that.
There you go, Brian.
Okay, I went over there again today with the building inspector just to make a final check. I'd like to make a comment in relation to what we discussed at the last meeting where this was described basically as the addition of what you might call a three foot nine inch catwalk along the side of the house in order to reach the rear deck. Construction of all this has already begun. But I would make the observation that the existing deck is being expanded 10 feet. So it's much more than just a three foot nine catwalk. So all that new construction down at the bottom of the drawing.
Yeah, so if, this is the 39 that is carried through here. This is the 35, which are the stairs down. So you can get down from that. This addition, which is.
I'm, I'm talking about the second floor.
That, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, okay, so what you're showing though on this drawing is the first floor.
No, no, that's.
Doesn't matter.
This is the, this is what the.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at your drawing.
You're saying, yep. Yours, this is the addition we're talking about though.
The existing second floor deck is being pushed out a new total of 10 feet. So it's not three, from where it exists now. I'm reading your drawing, your.
Correct.
The content engineering drawings, that would show two drawings on it. One is of the ground floor, the other is of the second.
Correct. You're, you're speaking of this 10 feet.
I just want to make this point for the board. It's not a 3.9, it's a 10 foot expansion of, of an existing non-conformity.
Can I respond?
Which construction has already begun. So I have, I have a problem with it.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Is, is it an existing non-conformity?
The, the deck is not. It's the first floor walkway. If I pull the survey up, this area is, is the, where the non-conformity is. The area over here is not. And going back to that, to what the chairman said, the 10 foot, which is shown here includes the 39 on the second floor to get to the stairs. This 39 already exists on the first floor. So we're mirroring the 39 on the second floor and adding stairs at 35. So the deck up top is expanding in this area, as shown by the cursor, an additional 2.6 feet plus the catwalk and the stairs.
See at the bottom where it says zero? Brian, do you see at the bottom where it says zero?
Here?
Above the words deck extension, that's really 10 feet, it's not zero.
It says 10.
It says 10.
10.
All right, on the drawing eye. Okay, so that's the expansion, it's 10 feet. This is all new. To the left of the stairway is new.
No, this here is the expansion. This is the expansion and this shaded area is the three parts of the expansion. That total 10 feet.
Yeah.
There's an.
It's an expansion of 10 feet.
There's an existing deck under, hold on.
The existing deck.
Side view of the first and second floor.
Since you were there with Tom, Tim, can you, can you better describe for the rest of the board who didn't have, you know?
One second.
I'd like to know what's going on on the property now before we've approved anything. And I'd like the understanding that you and Tom had when you visited the site.
Construction started without a valid permit.
Right.
The, I believe that the applicant claims that he has a valid permit and that's being disputed.
That is not the applicant's claim at this point, Mr. Chairman, based on my letter.
Well, construction began then without a permit. We'll just leave it at that?
Correct.
Okay.
The, the homeowner believed there to be a permit. It was subsequently determined not to be a validly issued permit.
I, I think that's what I was saying, but.
Sorry. I didn't mean issued in error, I was misunderstanding.
Perhaps I misspoke, but that is what I intended to say. In any case, I'm still looking at it as an expansion of 10 feet and the setback is supposed to be 30 feet. It needs a variance of more than 50% of that. And that's a precedent that at least I for one am very hesitant to set.
So I could pull up, so.
Any other questions from the board and we'll turn to the public?
So the ver, there was talk about this variance that was granted for the 14.9. That, that was to, to what is the, the lower catwalk, is that correct?
That is correct, Scott. The, the 14 feet is to the lower catwalk. We're asking to mirror that catwalk on the upper and keep the setback at 14, which is what the currently existing setback is. That's, that's the.
But I guess, I guess what my question is, be, because that variance exists, does that, does that variance still hold that they can build within 14.9 feet of that property line?
So if I can or, or I'm gonna misspell.
Scott, that was granted in 2012.
Yes.
Right, but, but generally they go with the land, correct?
Yes, they run with the land. Correct.
So that variance is still valid?
Correct.
So when we consider this, we're not looking at, at 30 feet, we're looking at a 14.9 foot setback as being legal, correct?
Well, I don't know that that's the case, that variances, once they're granted, make it all of a sudden, you know, a new setback. You don't create a new setback just because you've already been granted a variance. The setback is 30 feet.
Right, but I mean, well, I guess what I'm getting at is if, if they built this new thing and they were only 14.9 feet from the property line, would they even be before us? Is my question, I guess.
Yes.
There was a stop work order issued.
No, no, I know, but I'm just asking.
39 is not the new setback. It's not like a new setback, if they met it, they wouldn't have to come back here.
Okay, that's what my question.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
The setback's still 30 feet.
Right.
Right, so the 14.9 foot variance that's in existence has no bearing on any of this, correct?
Well, it has, it has a bearing as it relates to the fact that it was already granted.
Right.
But it doesn't have any bearing specifically on what they're building now. In, in terms of, of.
I think the issue Scott, and just forgive me, I'm gonna try to restate what I think. If you have a variance on the first floor for 14, you know, that allows a 14 foot setback, can you simply extend that up in the air to the second story? Is that what you're asking?
Sort of, yes.
I, I have a question.
The answer is no, you don't.
Well, I agree with you, but.
That's why they're here before us.
So Liz, I have a question, it's Alex, which is which is to assume for the sake of argument, I'm not necessarily asserting this, but I'm just, was for the, assumed for the sake of argument that the original variance was excessively generous and has caused a unhelpful precedent. If we as a board were to basically repeat that variance on the second floor of allowing a 14, you know, foot setback instead of the required 30, are we compounding that bad precedent and adding to it? Or are we just simply preserving it?
I mean, I think that it would just be used as a 14.9 foot setback as precedent. And each case is different and each case can be distinguished. The board can be concerned with setting precedent, but it's already at 14.9 feet. And if you felt that it was a prior mistake, you wouldn't be rescinding it, but you're right. You're, what you're saying is that you wouldn't want to make that same mistake twice.
You don't want to compound it.
Also, Alex, a balcony is different than a ground floor porch?
It's, to me, that's what the problem is. The abutting neighbors complained. And I totally get that. And we don't allow balconies on residential roofs anymore. So I don't, I quite don't understand what we were doing here.
This is not a roof deck. This is not a roof balcony.
Understand that, but the impact is the second floor, the adjacent neighbor. So I, I don't quite understand how we're rationalizing even getting to the second floor. Now that I understand it better than I did last time, because I, I thought it was a three foot catwalk, which it is not.
But that, that's helpful, Tim, that.
So the, the area of the variance request is a three, is, is a 35 walkway and a 36 catwalk. The area of the deck expanding is streetward away from, not part of the variance request.
The second floor deck is going to be 10 feet wider than it is now. I don't know how you can dispute that. And in fact, it's all framed out, so it's pretty obvious what it is.
So essentially, they were given a stop work order. It looks like they continued to work.
It looks like more construction was done since the time I was there six weeks ago, but I can't swear to it. I didn't take a picture or anything, but my memory is that there was less construction six weeks ago when I visited than there is now. But I, I, that's probably not relevant.
Not before the board, yeah, the construction.
Exactly. So all before the board is the, is the variance for the rear yard setback.
Correct.
How much is the variance for the rear yard setback?
It's supposed to be 30 feet.
And it's for?
It's going to be 14 feet and they need a variance of 16.
And that's for the second deck?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yes.
I have difficulty with this.
Okay, hold on a minute. Let's see if there are any other, before we start talking about what we think about. Are there any questions from the board before we turn to the public? Okay, we've heard from the neighbors a couple times. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to Eight Dartmouth Road? Carrie, see anybody out there? Carrie, are you there?
She's there.
I'm here.
Everybody out there waving their hand on Eight Dartmouth?
Yes, just the one.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, thank you for listening to us tonight. This is Patty, I'm Scott. We were sworn in previously. Do you need us to swear in again?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a couple of things I want to show you. I just want to preface everything is there's, there's no such thing as a catwalk on homes. Opera houses have catwalks. It's a deck. Also, the claim, the claim was just, oh, can I screen share? Can, can you make me host for a minute to be able to do this? Carrie?
You can go ahead.
Thank you very much. Can you, wait one second? We'll start here. Can you see the plans in front of you?
Yeah.
Yes, we can see them.
Okay, the, the, you can, our, our property is here at the corner. This is the prior to any building that's gone on or any planning or whatever. You can see that there was a 14 foot nine inch setback from the 15 foot border. The claim was just made that the existing deck did not cross into the old 30 foot what used to be the, what was the real, what is the real setback. The old deck in fact does cross into it. So I just want to state that. We're gonna move on. I want to show you what has already been constructed. I mean, what's come up before this board is the question for a an expansion from 14 foot nine to 14 feet. You can, their claim and is that this little area here is the nine inches that they're claiming back. We would show that it's more than that. There's also just a stone patio that's been built that way crosses over. There's also all this other construction here. Moving on, you can see, here's the stairs, here's the deck. There's no such thing as a catwalk. Again, opera houses have catwalks. This is all deck. And it's all deck on the second floor also. There was just a claim made by the applicant's attorney that the, that the variance was only for the second floor deck. The first floor deck mirrors this. We could show you that if you like. So it's actually for two decks. It's not a variance for one deck. Here you see the view, the, I guess this is the western side of the house, so this was the, has been referred to very often as the existing porch. It's been expanded, it's deeper, it's longer, it's, and it's been replaced. This is what has been referred to as a catwalk. I, I think we can please, please, please drop that vernacular, it's absurd. This stone wall has been replaced as part of this. It's masonry. The staircase is new. All of this is new, all the columns. This was prior, this is now. This is a view from the, from the harbor. It is visible from the road. Here's the existing deck here. Here's the new addition, here's the new staircase, here's the new first floor deck. They're all continuous. The, the, the increase of the, both of these decks would have here. The upper deck would increase from 196 feet to 460 feet. It's an increase of 135%. The, it's similar on, similar on the lower deck. And in total, the, the combined expansion of both decks virtually almost to a dot doubles the total deck area. So you can compare the, the plans, actually the existing structure that they've built without a permit to the prior house. You can see it's a massive addition. This is a, a perspective drawing of the structure. Here's the old structure, here's the new structure. This is the replaced old deck, which is actually wide and lengthened. Here's the formerly called catwalk. Here's the two new decks that double the size of each deck prior. Here's a perspective from our point of view. And I'm gonna show you a photograph after that, just to show you our point of view. It's previously been claimed that the, the barrier between the properties was all evergreen. In fact, it's, it's mostly deciduous. Here is, and this is really critically important. This is the pyramid. It's been claimed that the house doesn't violate the pyramid. I'm gonna go first, in a minute, I'm gonna go to the pyramid drawing that was on the plans submitted by the applicant on their survey, which we can assume is right. However, our measurements say it's wrong. But irregardless of that, this is their, their new plan. It's now 14 feet from the house. The current structure is 10, 10 foot two. It's actually longer than that, but they, they measured from four plate to four plate. There's a, there's at least an 18 foot drop between the four plate and the grade. They also don't show the, the, the height of the ballast, the banister. Let's assume 10 foot two, because is what they claim. Let's forget about the, the claim that's actually bigger than that. You take 10 foot two plus three and a half feet, you're at 14 foot eight. There's definitely an 18 foot drop here. You're over 15 feet. You're now 14 feet from the border. You're over 15 feet tall. You're, you got a, we, we see a six foot drop here. But let's just take for a moment, the applicant submitted, can you see the, the pyramid drawing that I'm on now?
It needs to be the same one.
Oh, hold on, let me see if I can, how do I switch between one drawing and another?
That go over here.
I'd like to do that. I don't see how to do it. Maybe a new shirt. Does that show you the? This might, yeah, I think this will do it. So this is the, the, do you see it now? Just give me one second to try to do this.
On the left-hand side, if you can click on your pictures there.
Just didn't do it, huh? Oh yeah, now it's good. Okay, this is the elevation. I think on the survey that the, a real survey, I'm not sure of what year this is, but I believe it's a survey that was completed very, very recently. It shows that it did conform. Again, we claim it doesn't conform, but regardless. It does show that here's a, the grade was at 28.9 and it does show that the grade at the property line is is five feet, five and a half feet lower. So let's assume this is correct. Five and a half foot drop to the property line. You've got now, what we measure out is more than a 15 foot structure, even by the applicant's drawings. So if you, and now it's 14 feet from the house. So if you take, let's call it 15 feet, which is the applicant is saying that 15 foot was five and a half is 20 and a half feet. It's now 14 feet away. That's six and a half foot variance that would be needed for the piercing of the, of the pyramid. I want to go back to this, these drawings here very quickly and then I want to finish with a couple of photographs, if, if the board will allow me, please. I know the board's already, you know, made, indicated that they may be against this, but I do want.
I would just ask that all this be submitted into the record so we can have copies?
It has been, it's there. So I guess that's finished. Again, that's perspective. We're gonna finish with just a couple. So I guess that's finished. Again, that's perspective. We're going to finish with just a couple of quick photographs, if you don't mind. And this is my first time really operating out of Zoom, but this was shot. Do you see the photograph?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, this is shot from our rear gate. It leads up to our rear door. This is at least, at least 50% of our egress into our home. We've talked about it before, that we feel it's looming over our property. It's looming over us. I want to share, finally, I'm going to finish with, and again, I appreciate your forbearance very much, but I think these photographs are important. This is the reality of the structure in question. This is what's built. This is the size of it. This is it compared to the old structure. There's the new stone wall. This is all new construction. And finally, the last thing I'd like to show you, well, I don't even feel I need to show you this, so that's it. That's our feelings about it. We strongly, strongly, strongly oppose it. I've already talked about that the idea of a catwalk, I just think it's spurious. And the final thing I'd like to say is that this has presented a very large burden on us, both cost-wise and time-wise. And, you know, for us to have to disprove what have been presented as alternative facts is it's just too much. I mean, it just has to end, and I don't want, we're hopeful that there won't be a continuance tonight and that this will be dead in the water. And finally, the last thing we'd like to ask is, assuming it is dead in the water, which I don't assume, but we hope, is what is the cure for this? Because we're living with it. We live through the building of it. We're living with it over our heads. We're putting up with being told that it's not, you know, it is conforming to pyramids. It is conforming, blah, blah, blah. It is only a request for a nine-inch variance. It doesn't loom over us. It's not visible from our house. It won't create noise. And actually, just getting back to, you know, we, just noise. That's the final, final thing I'm going to say. This catwalk that keeps being talked about, it's 60% larger than the existing deck below. It's 60%, and it's going to lead on to a patio that's more than doubled the existing deck up there.
Okay, listen, I think, I think we've heard you.
Our final, final comment.
Sir, I think we've heard you, and you're going back and repeating some of the same things.
The very final comment I have, really, truly, that this new deck would be accessible from the driveway by a staircase. There's no doubt it's making it possible for traffic to come up from the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to 8 Dartmouth Road? Anybody else? No.
I don't see anybody.
Okay, so if the board agrees, I think we could close the public hearing if the board has no other questions.
I would like an opportunity to respond to what the neighbor said, because I believe them to be inaccurate based on what we have submitted, as well as the opportunity to reply to those things that he's put forth in the record that could be considered.
Let's, let me, let me address, Susan had a question first.
Well, no, I just wanted to thank the adjacent property owner for the great drawings and explanation and an apology that you had to work so hard to explain it from your vantage point.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Brian, we'll turn to you, but before you start, I just want to say that the comments that I made at the beginning of this meeting about expanding this by 10 feet and granting a variance that's over 50%, regardless of any testimony that came from the neighbors, that thought is from me, and I still hold it. So if there are other comments that you want to make, please feel free.
Well, there is. I first want an opportunity to respond to what the neighbor says, because I believe them to be false based on the information we were provided by surveyors and architects. The owner is here this evening and would, I'd like to address the board. And in light of this information that's been put forth by the neighbor and comments by the board tonight, which were different than what we heard last time, I would be requesting an adjournment to address those and determine how we proceed with this application subsequent to the owner addressing the board this evening.
I asked if anyone from the public wanted to speak to this. No one said anything.
He was the owner, so I was, that's part of the applicant, so.
All right.
Brian, what's, what's the name?
Apprendi.
Oh, I see. Yep, thank you. I'm just asking her to unmute. Hello?
Hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Well, well, it was a little better before all this, but.
Excuse me, are you an attorney?
No, I'm just a.
Okay, we need, I'm asking just because we have to swear you in. So anyone who is going to speak, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And can you just state your name?
Sure. Sorry about the view here. Joe Apprendi.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry about the background noise. Just first and foremost, since the inception of this project, obviously, we've been going through all kinds of communication issues, not just between ourselves and our contractor, but certainly the contractor and the city. It has been a difficult process, obviously, coupled with the pandemic and everything that that caused during this period of time. Just to clarify one point, we did absolutely believe we had a permit. I had a copy of that permit, whether it was issued incorrectly or faulty. I apologize for that. If any of that was on my side or our contractor's side, we certainly want to understand why that occurred. But we absolutely stopped work immediately when Tom came by the property, and he was actually very kind when he gave me the stop work order and we spoke about it. There's not been any additional work done on that deck since we understood we were in violation. And it's the last thing that we would ever do, is begin work without a permit after a major investment like that in a property in Sag Harbor. It's not something we would even consider doing. Obviously, we want to, you know, proceed with the approval of the city in accordance with whatever process and procedures you guys have. So I just absolutely want to take that off the table and and I definitely think it was exacerbated by the circumstances over the last several months. Having said that, you know, I did, we did become aware that our neighbors were concerned about what was going on. We didn't know to the extent of their concern. Clearly, they delivered the extent of their concern. We are a family of three young children that are there consistently, plus another three from my prior marriage. Many of the children are young. They're nine, 10, and three and a half. We have a pool that's adjacent to the property. The children make a lot of noise. And the initial complaint of the neighbors was largely about noise. And yes, I understand when young children and they don't, I guess, are a couple that don't have a lot of children and they're there, and they probably don't want to be annoyed by a family with children making noise. Having said that, you know, we try to be as polite as we can. We try to keep it down. We don't throw raucous parties at this home in any capacity. We are very cognizant of our neighbors, and we try to do our best to take them into consideration in terms of how we behave day in and day. I can only tell you how many times I try to keep the kids quiet in the spirit of trying to keep the noise level down. But just relative to this project, and I know Scott was really harping on this is a patio, not a catwalk, but it wasn't expanded. We had a lower-level deck, the exact same dimensions from the first floor to the lower-level deck. We obviously, the only access to the existing porch was through the master bedroom. All we were trying to accomplish was an egress from the second floor to allow traffic from our, whether it was our children, whether it was from guests, to not have to go and access the current porch from the interior through the master bedroom. That was the primary accomplishment. In fact, that catwalk at 3.9 is the exact measurements. You, you can barely walk by. In fact, the roof eaves extend into that area, and it was basically the bare minimum that we could accomplish to just get someone to pass by. You cannot put a seat. You will not stand there. There's nothing to look at. All there is is evergreens and nothing to see. The whole view is all about where the existing deck is towards the water. That's the whole point. Allow people to enjoy the great view of Sag Harbor Cove and Sag Harbor Bay, which is all we were trying to accomplish. And of course, given the pool below and the porch above, if we were sitting out on the deck, and we wanted to quickly be able to walk down steps, our kids are swimming in the pool. We have young children. We want to be able to get to them quickly. So we certainly wanted to be able to walk down steps quickly to get to the pool area when we're monitoring our children. And the same thing with the egress. Yes, it serves a great access point to get access to the upper-level deck without going through the master bedroom, but it's also, from our perspective, an ability to have an egress in case of an emergency. You could, if there was a fire below or some other emergency, there's an opportunity to exit from the second floor and get out of the home. And that's just another added benefit of having it there. And it was literally the only place you could have a way to get out, if you looked at the entire floor plan of the second floor, to get out of the property. So we were just trying to, yes, accomplish a way to utilize the property with this massive investment we made, a little bit better, and also, you know, you know, address really frankly the concerns that you guys have, as well as our neighbors, and do it as minimally invasive as possible. That's all we were trying to do, and and let me tell you, the last thing we wanted to see is the last nine months, this thing sitting like this. Yes, Scott, you're right. It's an eyesore. We have to live with it every day. It's painful that we're dealing with this as well. It's not what we wanted. We wanted it to go smoothly. So I really, you know, appeal to the board to consider those facts. We definitely put in the investment with surveys, with lawyers, with architects to to conform to what your concerns were. I can't comment on Scott's statistics, but we did the right thing to measure whether it's the pyramidal concerns you had or other concerns, and we tried to be as transparent as possible despite the history of this project, which has been an absolute nightmare for us. Thank you.
Okay.
My request would be to leave the written record open through the next meeting. You don't have to leave, I'd ask for the whole record to be left open, but at least the written record, so I can explain to my client what the board sentiment is, what the legal ramifications are, should the board go in that direction.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Anyone else on the board have a problem with adjourning until the next meeting?
No, I don't.
Okay, so can I get a motion to adjourn this until our next meeting?
I make a motion?
Which will be for the purposes of further submission from the attorney.
So moved.
Second. I think we're done. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
For the record, the next meeting is December 15th.
Okay, moving on, new applications. Can I get a motion to open? Taylor, 5 Green Street.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, members of the board. Brian DeSessa, 2462 Main Street, Suite 7, attorney for the applicant. I have with me this evening Russell Ricciardi, the architect for the project. Who's raising his hand, and I will screen share to walk us through this project. What you see on your screen is 5 Green Street. The subject property, it's a two-story dwelling, was substantially reconstructed in the, in and around 2008. The applicant, the lot contains, as you can see here, 6,128 square feet in an R-20 district, making it non-conforming with respect to lot size and zoning. Applicant is proposing to add a small one-story addition on the west side, a one-story addition on the east side with a second story on part of that. That lays out, hold on, my. The addition in total on the first floor on the east side is 257 square feet. On the west side is a 50-square-foot addition. This addition would allow for a staircase to access the basement, which is currently accessible through exterior Bilco doors only. And back to the east side, a 126-square-foot second-story addition. Pulling up now what the volume is. The proposed addition on the eastern side is six feet, three inches. That we're asking to add a 6.3-foot addition to the eastern side here where my mouse is. The addition on the western side is tucked in and consistent with where this is now to allow for stairs, interior stairs, to access the basement area, which currently exists. Any questions so far? The, I have up the pyramid drawings.
No, they're not up. All we see is Google Earth.
Yeah, we're just seeing one, one image.
The first picture.
Can you see? Oh, it said it's paused.
Brian.
Excuse me?
We see the photograph in Google Earth in the front of the building house.
How about now?
No.
Does the house?
Let me stop it one second, please. I'm sorry.
And that's all we've seen, so.
Oh, I didn't realize that. My apologies. Let me, okay. Can you see these pyramid drawings now?
Yes.
Yes.
So let me, I apologize. Go back to the survey. Bear with me. This is the one, this is the eastern addition, which is 6.3, 6.3 feet wide. And it's a portion of one story and a portion of two stories. This is the 50-square-foot addition, which would allow the construction of internal staircase, an internal staircase to access the basement, which is currently only accessible outside through the Bilco doors. This is an overview of those proposed additions. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is the 6.3-foot addition on the eastern side. In total, 257 square feet with a 126-square-foot second story. Basically, the applicant is trying to make a little bit more usable space. Mr. Ricciardi can go through what the programming is, and simply put, on the western side, we're looking to add a internal covered staircase to access the basement. I have up before me the pyramid drawings that show the existing house, as well as the encroachments in red. The two one-story additions on both the east and western properties do not require any pyramid. The dormer, second-story addition on the eastern side is where all the pyramid relief is, it comes from, for that, for that dormer, dormer addition.
Just a note, to the elevation to the left of that, Brian, just so the board understands that green portion up there, most of that should be shaded red.
This top portion cutting through.
Yes, because that's in violation.
Correct. This, this addition, this is how it would shave through, looking from front to back.
Right.
So it's a total of 826 cubic feet.
What's the existing pyramid violation?
There's no existing pyramid violation.
Oh, I thought that's what Scott meant.
No.
There's a little bit of one now, beige area.
No.
No?
The.
It does look like from the pyramid line they've drawn on here, there is some existing.
That beige roof line.
So what happens with, well, what happened was this, and we had talked about this. When the house was constructed in 2008, the pyramid law was different. It was calculated at, starting at five feet above grade, and then it was reduced down to be calculated at grade. So this whole, our request, and I can have these reshaded to further clarify, this, we've calculated the additional pyramid for the additional second floor at 826 cubic feet. this, we've calculated the additional pyramid for the additional second floor at 826 cubic feet. That doesn't exist there today. The one, one-story addition on the eastern side does not require any relief. The existing house on the western side is 8.8 feet from the property line. We're holding the 8.8 feet for the western proposed addition for the staircase. On the eastern side of the property, the house is currently sits at 16.6 feet from the eastern property line. We're proposing the addition at its closest point to be 10.3. And the second floor would be at 11.9, but the, for purpose of the variance, it goes to the closest, which is the first floor addition of 10.3. The applicant is proposing to remove the existing brick patio in the rear, as well as a patio on the eastern side to reduce existing lot coverage to accommodate for some of the proposed additional coverage for the lot coverage and building coverage. The property is well screened from both sides. We haven't heard from any of the neighbors. It is a modest addition. Mr. Ricciardi can discuss the purposes of that addition, and him or I can answer any questions that the board may have. We would submit that no undesirable change would, would occur. There is a two-story existing house. It is a 6.3 foot on one side and maintaining the same distance on the western side additions in, in an area where houses are close to the property line. Due to the size of the lot, the applicant does not have another method to achieve the programming that Mr. Ricciardi is going to discuss. Based on the existing conditions which are, which are considered for this property, we would submit that it is not substantial. The proposed addition will have, not have a negative effect in terms of environmental or other conditions. We're not adding, we're not adding bedrooms, we're not adding anything that would create an environmental detriment here. The house is just being tweaked, provides for some better living for this applicant. We're removing the solid patio in the rear, which would allow for more drainage. And all rainwater runoff in this proposed addition will be captured in dry wells as recorded by the building inspector. I'd let Mr. Ricciardi walk us through what the proposals are for, and then I can answer any questions the board may have.
Brian, can you bring up A100, which is the floor plan?
I'm working on that right now. Bear with me one second. Sorry, just my computer reset. One second.
We've got this in front of us, Mr. Ricciardi.
Thank you. Do I need to be sworn in?
Yes. Thank you. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you sort of tell truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Russell Ricciardi. I'm the architect for the applicant.
Could you give us your address, please, for the record?
Absolutely. The office address is 699 Madison Avenue, New York, New York.
Okay.
10065. So the, the purpose of the two, the additions on both sides of the house, on the first level, on the east side, we're adding just a small area for a convenient staircase from the family room into the existing cellar, so that the, the owner can actually access the cellar without having to go outside. On the western side, we're adding the six point, six-foot, three-inch addition is going to house a pantry serving area, a powder room. There is an existing powder, there is an existing powder room, but it's underneath the staircase, which is actually extremely awkward because you're under the slope of the staircase. So it's, it's actually very difficult to use the toilet in that existing powder room. And then we're just expanding the area that is the kitchen dining room and the family room, this six feet, three inches. And then you go to the second level. There is, above the staircase, there's no addition proposed. And currently, this, the front bedroom, the master bedroom, which does have, that's being slightly renovated, but no change in terms of the, the envelope of the house. There is an existing very small bathroom off the hallway, but the two bedrooms share this very small bathroom. And the client was asking for the extra space so that we can have one bathroom that the middle bedroom would use, but an en suite bathroom for the major guest bedroom, which is at the back of the house. And that's basically the extent of the addition.
This is the staircase that I didn't have up before, that Russell was talking about, that just allows for the applicant to get into the basement from the interior of her house.
Right, so you would, you would walk down from the family room into the existing cellar, and the staircase is wrapping around the existing fireplace. That's the extent.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
There was just one housekeeping thing. I see that there are elevations noted on the pyramid drawings, but we do need, on the survey, they're not indicated.
I can clean those up, Mr. Baker.
We need just those added to the survey.
Yep.
Can I make an observation for the benefit of the board on building lot coverage? When it says that the increase in building lot coverage is 1% and 5.2%, that's really not correct. The, the total is not 100%. The total is 25%. So the increase on the first one is actually 18%. And the increase on the second one, where the limit is 20%, it's a 26% increase, not a 5.2% increase. So these are fairly substantial. That's all. Other questions from the board? Okay, then, let's turn to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to Five Green Street?
Can I ask a question about?
Of course.
Real quick. Um, my house is around the corner, about a block away. And I walk by this house a lot because of the paddleboard at the end of Green Street. I remember when the house sold, and it sold rather quickly, and it was a good price, did your client not understand the constraints that a village house had in terms of? What?
Well, they, they understood what they were buying.
Okay.
Okay, anyone from the public? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to Five Green Street?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. Well, if there are no other comments.
I just have a question for Brian and the architect. Have we heard from any of the neighbors as to whether they approve or, or are nervous about this addition? These additions?
I've spoken to the neighbor across the street at 12, and he has no, he's reviewed the plans and has no issue. I have not heard from the neighbors to the east or the west, which would be the adjoining property owners. We did send the mailings and a letter, but I have not heard anything.
Thank you.
Well, they're the ones that would be impacted, obviously.
Correct. That's why I mentioned that. Correct.
Okay, so could I get a motion then to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so what we do now is have a conversation among the board, kind of a, not a formal vote, but we want to give the applicant an indication of where we stand on it. To me, this is a very small lot that's pretty built out, and increasing the total lot coverage by those percentages, 18% and 26%, goes to illustrating that back. So while these bump outs on either side of the house seem fairly modest, because the lot is so small as it is, and the house is so large, I don't think that's, I don't think they really are that modest. But that's just my opinion. Scott?
Yeah, I kind of agree. I mean, I mean, if it was only happening on one side or something, I could, because it leaves like a bigger space on one side of the house, like a lot of Sag Harbor, but it's, it's like adding things in both areas, and it, it just gets very close to the property line, in addition to the lot coverage and everything. Creates just very small corridors on either side of the house.
I, I, you know, I, having, knowing that the interior of the house, neighborhood fairly well, the adjacency of the other two properties is of concern to me. It's, those are the two that are impacted. And I do think that the lot coverage issue is substantial.
Alex is to ask a question of my fellow board members or of Liz. Forgive my ignorance. Why is the side yard that's allowed on one side 10 feet and it's allowed to be, sorry, the setback is 10 feet on one side and 22 feet on the other?
I was going to ask the same question.
Go to page two of the turned on letter.
Yeah, it's in the turned on letter, if you look at it.
Go to page two of the turned on letter.
From, from Tom. It explains.
Oh, the four tenths rule.
The four tenths rule applies to this lot.
Sorry, thank you.
Yep.
Which is already an accommodation for the fact that, that many, many lots in Sag Harbor are, are very narrow. Ham?
I agree with Susan. I, I do have concern about the neighbors on each side and, and the size of the house and the lot coverage. So I'd like to hear more from the, the two people from neighbors on each side.
Well, they received written communications, and there's a sign up in front of the house, and they chose not to comment. So what I think you're hearing, Brian, is that the board is, has some problems with this.
I would ask you, we can carry it over to December. I'll talk to the applicant. I'll also reach out again affirmatively to the neighbors and see if I can get something from them as part of what I've heard. And we can then address those in December, if acceptable to the board.
Brian, could I ask a question?
I'm sure. Who's asking?
Russell.
Oh, I didn't see it. Sorry. We can talk right after.
No, I'd like to ask a question of the board if I could.
Oh, yes, you can, absolutely.
Would, just in terms of my conversations with, with the owner, and would you be more in favor if we eliminated the second-story portion of it in terms of the visibility? Or is that not the issue?
Is there anyone on the board that would favor this if the second story was eliminated?
That doesn't, that doesn't remedy the lot coverage issue.
Right. That would be my problem with it, that it doesn't remedy the lot coverage issue.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so can I get a motion to adjourn this until our next meeting? Waiting for comments from the attorney and also any comments that might come in from neighbors.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, 30 John Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dela, Dela Sepps. I'm going to ask for a motion to open this and then adjourn it at the request of the applicant to the next meeting. So could I get a motion to open 30 John Street?
Some move.
Move.
Second? Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Now, at the request of the applicant, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn this until our next meeting. Motion?
Some move. Second? Second?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, could I get a motion to open 71 Franklin Avenue, Hubert and Wood?
Some move.
My second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Clyde Wood, and this is my wife, Veronica, here.
Are you an attorney, sir?
No, I'm not, no.
Okay, we're going to ask, we're going to swear you in, please. Could you raise your right hands? Are you both going to testify? Yeah, thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. So confirm once again for our record, your name and your address.
My name is Clyde Wood.
Veronica Wood.
And our address is 4 Sulky Circle, East Hampton.
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, our, our architect is, is, is on, is on the call, I believe.
What is his name?
Tom Pedrazzi.
Oh, I got him.
Okay. And just before we start, if I may, I'd just like to say a few words, very, very briefly. We started this project almost two years ago, and we did receive approval to start work. And we're now back here. We are where we are. I really hope that we can get a clear path forward for this project. The house will be in walking distance of our, of our son's school. And we're all very much looking forward to becoming residents of the, of the village. Your note from our address that we are current local residents, and we have been for, for the last three years. This year has been a challenge for us all, I know. And as a result, this move has become even more important for my family, both personally and also financially. I'm therefore hoping to get a procedural path to complete this construction in a timely manner tonight. With winter approaching, we also want to protect the investment to date, what we have up already, obviously framing, et cetera. And yeah, I'd also like to give our neighbors something better to look at as well. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pedrazzi, did you want to offer anything or not at this time?
I'm going to hold my comments.
All right, if you're going to make any, I want to swear you in. We could.
Okay.
Okay.
Swear me in.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. So let's turn to questions from the board.
I just have a question.
Whoever has a dog, could you put yourself on mute?
I have a question, and that is, this is in the historic district, and the house was demolished when in fact what was approved was simply a renovation plan. Was it a contributing structure, construct, structure to the historic district?
No, the house is not contributing.
And do you have a property national register listing that says it?
The secretary of the building department has the registry, and it's been presented several times all through the process when we apply at the review board, so.
Oh, look right now. Hold on.
Yeah, this was never a consideration throughout the Architectural Review Board and the actual approval of the project, so.
But how did the house end up getting demolished? I'm just curious. I understand that's not what we're considering today.
The house is not, your question was if the house was contributing. No, the house is not contributing. But it is in the village.
When the, when the Architecture Review Board reviewed this, they were assuming the house was staying, correct, when they reviewed the project?
No, no.
No, yes.
Yes.
We, the, the zoning board assumed it was staying.
And the Architecture Review Board did also, correct?
The, I, what the confusion we are, we found ourselves is that the project that was approved by the review board entitled us to demolish three sides of. Enti- entitled us to demolish three sides of the home. Keeping only one wall. Foundation and, um, and, and wood. Construction side of the, the house. So while, uh, the project went on and the foundation was poured. And then inspected, um, all of that went along. Until, uh, it was time to put the roof and the constructor. Without, uh, we were not here in, in town actually. Had to make a decision, I guess, to take the roof and everything else to be able to build the new house. So the, the, what we think it's a bit of, of, uh, of the. Misunderstanding is that we, we, if you look at what the project that was approved. Last year and that, uh, we were given the green light, the, 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 the review board was. Informed that we were gonna keep only one wall. So I mean, very, very specific.
I don't think there was ever presented as a full demolition.
It was not presented as a full demolition.
Sorry, could we un, unmute our architect, please? He's just, I think he has a comment.
Okay, well, what I want to say is that no, it was not that we, we, um. It was not, we were, did not apply as a demolition, no. That's, that's exactly right. But our understanding, uh, looking at the project. With a brand new foundation, um, and an expansion northwest and east or, or I don't exactly know the. The.
Direction.
The direction. Uh, it would, uh, preclude. Uh, at one point to have to take the, the, whatever was the construction, the house inside away from it. So maybe the architect can explain it to you better.
Yeah, yes, let, let me do. Could I just ask Liz a question before you start? Um, Liz, did the, has, has there been a definition of demolition? I know there was a guideline that people had been using. Is there now a definition?
Um, well, if there was, let me just check that because.
Well, all I was getting to was the guideline that the building department had been using. Even if you saved one wall, that was still considered total demolition because it was, had to be less than a certain percentage. Of dom- demolition to not be considered full demolition.
It could be an interpretation, like you're saying, from the building inspector.
Right.
Demolition is defined, um. As, in definitions for the zoning code, as the destroying, tearing down or raising of all of a building except in the historic district. Historic district has its own definition, if you look at.
Well, this is in the historic district.
Right, I'm going there, I'm going there.
Uh, once again, it's not a contrib- contributing structure.
I'd love to see the national register listing, so.
We already went through this.
It's not. I just checked.
Thank you.
Miss Mead, thank you.
So, and demolition in the historic district is the taking, the destroying, tearing down or raising. Of part or all of a contributing building or landmark in the historic district. So that only, if, the, the whole section which adds additional standards. For demolition in a historic district is only for contributing structures or landmarks.
Right.
But this is still pre-existing non-conforming with respect to, um, setbacks. And as far as that rule that you're talking about, it still applies. We have to ask Tom what his interpretation is with regard to demolition. Because you still have, if you demolish your structure and it's pre-existing non-conforming, you can lose those pre-existing non-conforming rights to those setbacks. And, and zoning would require you to make it as conforming as possible, right?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I know there was a, there was a guideline that they had created and I don't know if he still is using it. I don't know what the, the, they currently use.
Yes, Tom.
Yeah.
I think we had to hold this case and get more information from Tom.
Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate that, but you know, this is, you know, at the end of the day, what, what was approved, ladies and gentlemen, is what we're trying. To, to put up, the, the, the footprint, the house, the architecture. All review. And I, I just want to say that this is. You know, in normal times, this is, you know, maybe not personal things that need to be put on the table here, but this. We went through a whole year, uh, of this with the architectural review board and in the current climate, this, this is gonna ruin us. You know, and we just need your support. It is not conforming, it is not historical. How do we move into this house? How does our child go through school? And how do we live a life that is gonna, you know, not, not, not cause to be normal? Because we need, you know, we're not, we're not trying to do something here which is not conforming, which is gonna cause an issue. We're just trying to finish what was approved.
Thank you, thank you. Can I make an observation for the board and then, then Susan, um, I'll, I'll call on you? Um, we previously granted this variance. And what's come up now is actually reduces slightly the pyramid variance that we already granted. It's not a conforming, it's not a contributing house. It shouldn't have been torn down without a permit, but it was. But I personally, um. Don't see what our problem is in, in granting this variance.
I, I don't either. The reason I suggested we might need to hold it is. I want to be sure there's no other setback variance needed.
The building inspector went there and looked at it. And this is, this is the only thing that, that we have to be looking at is this.
I just.
Okay, I, I'll just say that.
That we already granted.
There's someone from the public I know wants to speak.
I'll just say, I'll defer to Susan on whether we need to kind of get an affirmation of what the right setbacks are and so on. So maybe that would, uh, dictate that we can't make a decision tonight. But I'm wondering whether we can at least have the discussion tonight so that we can help move this along. Why, but I'm curious why the two of you don't, you think the building inspector missed a setback?
No, I just, it was after Liz read the definition of demolition and said if you had non-conforming setbacks, you could lose them. If in fact your house had been demolished. And I wanted to.
That's for any pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Yeah, I would have to say that.
Question, right? Because, I mean.
Yeah, but I would say that based on what's happened, it definitely was demolished, so. I don't know if that. My question, Tim, what, what was, I don't, you know, quite honestly, I don't remember us granting a variance on this. What, what did we grant a variance for on this project?
I have that in front of me. You have, um, a variance that you granted to construct a second story addition. To an existing single-family residence and reconstruct a shed to convert it into a pool house. The variances were from Sag Harbor Village Code, section three hundred nine point three D. For sky plane relief to allow the proposed second story addition to protrude into the sky plane one thousand eight hundred twenty-two cubic feet. Where zeros permitted and to allow the proposed pool house to protrude into the sky plane one hundred and forty-four cubic feet where zero is permitted.
Liz, when was that permit given or variance given?
Variance was issued by this board on September seventeenth, twenty nineteen.
So, uh, uh, based on that, I, I mean, I agree with Tim. I mean, that, that, it's actually a reduction.
I'm going to think they built the.
I simply want to be sure they don't need anything else.
Pool house in the wrong place, right?
Pool house is gonna be reconstructed. It's gonna be, uh, completely de- demolished and, and built in accordance with the approved. Uh, setbacks.
But that's not before the board for additional relief.
It is actually. There is, there is a note in there about the, the pool house not being built as per the approved plans.
Some discernment.
Yeah.
There are people that want to be heard from the public, I know.
Okay. So let's turn to the public. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak to seventy-one Franklin Avenue?
Tiffany's on. Tiffany, can you hear us, Tiffany?
Yes, I can.
Oh, sorry, you're muted. Sorry.
Am I okay now?
Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Um, Tiffany Scarletto and Russell Cradaville, um, he's here as well. We're the owners of the property next door at eighty-three Franklin Avenue. Um, I will tell you that I was not here the first time that this project was approved. And I make a practice, I, you know, I understand that people have property rights. I didn't appear at the last meeting because I didn't seem to have an issue with it. Um, what, and I'll just give you a little history of, of, from my perspective and from our perspective of how this project has progressed. Um, they first started with the pool house. They demolished that. They built the foundation too close to the property line. So there is a foundation built, I think five, three feet from the property line. When it's supposed to be at least seven. Um, I don't know what the intention is with respect to that foundation with the pool house. Um, but I will tell you that once I noticed that, that I didn't realize the foundation was built too close to the line, but as soon as they started to frame it. I called Tom and I said, Tom, you know, I think that this was probably built too close to the property line. It looks like it's getting a little high. Can you take a look at it? He went over, I think he spoke to the property owners. Instead of stopping building, they continued construction. Continued construction on the pool house. The pool house is now probably about three feet high. I don't see anything in the villages records right now about reducing the height. Of the, um, pool house. I've provided pictures to Carrie, I think. Is it?
Or have it, yeah.
I apologize because I ended up on my cell phone for this tonight. But I did send Carrie a couple of pictures, both of, of Ms. McMahon's home, which as, as. You know, the, uh, applicant so lovingly referred to as, you know, something that they would like to look at. I like to look at Ms. Lucille's home, Ms. McMahon's home. I think my family's owned this property now. They said they've owned it a couple of years. My family has been here now, probably. I'm gonna not tell you my age, so forty-five plus years. I'll leave it at that. Um, but that being said, um, if you take a look at the pictures that I sent Carrie earlier, and I'm sorry, I can't pull them up myself. Um, one picture of the existing pool house, um, or existing as it was shed at that time. And, and you'll see a picture of what they continued to construct until they got a stop work order. So after Tom went and spoke with them about the framing, they continued on and. Sheathed the house, sheathed the pool house, put the roof on and then tacked a tarp on the top. To make sure they got whatever, you know, they thought they had to get done, done. Um, irrespective of the fact that Tom tried to stop them from doing that to begin with. Um, you know, no, and I, as I said, I don't see anything in the villages records at all about reducing the height of that building. Um, and it, right now is probably, I'm gonna estimate three feet too high. And, you know, furthermore, the other thing that I noticed in the villages records is that there's a proposal to cut that back. Part of this, you know, overall repair.
Can you see anything?
See a tree.
We can see a.
A dead tree.
There. And beyond the dead tree. Is what was existing as what was called, and, and you can see the. Well, forgive my dead tree. I try and then somebody didn't water it. Um, but you can see what was existing there as what was a, basically a shed. And in the second photograph, you see what was built after that. And again, you know.
That's.
Perspectives are completely different, so I don't really see the relevance of these two pictures.
I, I, you came to interrupt me right now. I'm speaking, thank you.
Uh, please, everyone speaks only to the board, not to each other. Thank you.
Um, I can provide a, a ton of additional historical photographs going back to the early nineteen seventies if the board would like to see those as well. Um, since we've owned the home.
Tiffany, this is a pic, that white building is the new pool house?
No, that. Switch over to the new one. And I, I, forgive me, but you can see there's, you know, sort of the top of the tree and what I'm gonna go, call the top of my fence weeds. There's a six-foot fence there right now.
It was the other picture.
Hold on, my computer just stopped.
There you go. So you can see, a- and you can just judge by the top of, and I'm gonna call them my fence weeds again in my, in the sign for my son's graduation. You can see the extensive height that was put onto that and the property owners put a illegally, again, put a stockade fence in. On their property. I, I, you know, whatever that was about. Um, you know, what, a- and as I said, what I saw on the plans as well, which concerned me with respect to the pool house, was that their intention was. To, not to take the pool house down, which I, again, I think this board should be concerned with. This should be in front of the board for a pyramid variance if they don't intend to remove the height. Excess height on that property. In addition to that, it is, it appears to me from the plans they submitted to the board. That they're depending on taking that pool house and moving it over and leaving the existing foundation underneath that and building some type of. Bridge or cover over that, a concrete cover, which in my mind is five point three feet away from the property line. Now, I, I appear in front of this board on a regular basis and most of the, sometimes I do appear in front of this board for things. Simple as a setback variance for a window well. So I'm not sure how. This, this applicant particularly is permitted to build some type of foundation and then a bridge to cover over the foundation that they illegally put in the wrong spot to begin with. And that's a structure that remains in the ground without any kind of setback variance, when I'm required to come in on a regular basis for things. That really can't be seen from. The, really can't be seen from the roadway such as window wells. Um, in addition to that, the structure that they're proposing there, um, prevents them from doing any significant revegetation. Um, I appreciate that the revegetation plan that they submitted, um, during their original application was actually of my plantings. Um, but I would like them to submit some type of landscape plan at this point to the board to deal the issues that they created there. Um, with respect to the house itself. Um, although it may not be a contributing house, it's my understanding that it, it would, it. It was a Sears and Roebuck house, um, which although may not have any historical significance. You, per se, really does have some type of significance for most of us. Um, and that house has now been completely, obviously been completely demolished. Um, and what I would say to the board in addition to all of this is that, you know, just by the way this happened. You know, a stop work order was issued on the pool house. Then they went on to continue with the house. They went on to continue with the house until a stop work order was issued on that as well. Um, and not to say that I agree with the issuance of piecemeal stop work orders, but. This applicant continued to violate the code to the point where the building inspector finally felt the need to complete, shut the project down completely and send them back to you guys. For approval. Um, with respect to the house particularly, I will tell you that, um, over the past couple of months as we watched it progress. There's been an extraordinary amount of fill brought in or redistributed, as I shall say, from other parts of the property with the excavation. Results of the excavation from the basement for the pool house as well as for the pool that they installed. After they had a stop work order for the garage or pool house. And that an additional amount of fill was brought in, so I don't think the height of the house is accurate at all. Um, you know, I, it, the height of the house doesn't necessarily affect me from my end, but I am concerned about the neighbor on the other side. Who's basically, um, probably about fifteen feet down from this, at this point. Um, I do think that the grade was significantly changed on this property and I'd like to see the board ask the applicant. Address the changes in grade that have occurred over the, since construction started on the house.
I would like to address the board.
Well, I, I'd like to just, um, address the board. Um, we did have a survey, an existing survey. Um, we did pay for an existing survey to be, to be done. So my drawings reflect all of the surveys. Elevations. So we are still, we, in, in the, in the pyramid encroachment has not changed. And to the west, we have, we are still not encroaching onto the west. So there is the, 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 the volume that we're proposing to, to get the variance on has not changed. Even as we re-contour the light, the lot, and, and the, and, and the re-contoring has not stopped, has not ended. It's, it's, that's a, that's a construction grade. It's gonna be, it's gonna be reevaluated, you know, and, and regraded, but the, the changes in elevation at the property line have not changed. And as, as far as.
Let's see if there's anyone else from the public that wants to speak to this. Is there anyone else in the public for seventy-one Franklin Avenue?
It's me, the owner. I would like to explain some.
Just hold on just a minute. I want to see if there are any other comments out there. Thank you.
Hold on one moment.
One more. I'm gonna reach my hand again. I'm out.
I just think that, um.
Carrie, do you have somebody else from the public out there?
Yes, I believe that, um, it was Tiffany, the other person that was with Tiffany. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Right, my name is Russell Cradaville, eighty-three Franklin Avenue, Sag Harbor.
Are you a lawyer, sir?
No, I'm not.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So, as my wife Tiffany. So, as my wife Tiffany explained, when, uh, we saw that there was a, uh, application in front of the zoning board, we reviewed the plans. Um, although we did feel that the, that the size of the, um, variance was rather large. We are also understandable about the fact that people buy a property and would like to, um, maybe expand the amount of living space that they have. When this project started, um, immediately you could tell that they were building the first level grade. And you could also tell that the, uh, pool house was being built in the wrong spot. I twice went over and spoke with, um, one time the property owner was there. Another time, just, I'm not sure if there was someone from the architect's office or it's just the construction manager. And I explained, I said, listen, this is heading down a bad path. Um, I served on a zoning board. Um, obviously Tiffany appears in front of boards all the time. Be very politely twice and said, your grade is too high. The height of this second level is going to be too high. The pool house is too close. It's definitely going to be much higher than what was proposed. What Tiffany didn't mention is that to the rear of that pool house, not the picture you're looking at, but to the rear of that pool house actually overlooks our swimming pool. So they now have a structure that is probably a good five to six feet above, above the, above the fence, looking over our swimming pool at approximately, what? Seven feet from the property line. Um, and again, you know, what is bothering us here is the complete lack of, you know, whether it was Tom that went over and told them they needed to change. So the, the, the thing that's bothering me is the little, this, this kind of sad story that they're portraying. As the neighbor right next door, that's not the truth, okay? And then the other part is that that house, you know, again, is is looming over our property. And, you know, I would like to see some sort of vegetation or something going to help screen the fact that where our table where we eat outside in the summer with the umbrella, that that we're staring, you know, barrel down, you know, they're barreling down, their sight line is is right where we eat and their pool house is barreling down right where we swim. And, you know, I I'm not asking for, to say that, hey, we need to, you know, start over. And technically, I guess, they probably should have, they should actually start with zero building permit. They should start right from the start because essentially they, they're starting with nothing because they tore the whole house down. We're not asking for that. What we're asking for is, A, you gotta move the pool house. That means the foundation as well. You can't leave a foundation because we know what that leads to. You leave concrete there, you know what comes next. So they made a mistake, they were told that needs to get fixed. And I think they need to talk about in some way, we need to see a vegetation plan and some screening. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, also, but just to be clear, just to be clear, other issues were raised though, including the height of the pool house. Are you not concerned about that any longer?
Uh, I I'd like to reply to that. The pool house is coming down. It's being rebuilt. Take it down to the ground.
But that's to address the, the, the wrong location. The neighbors have raised an issue about it being higher than was approved. Is that?
It's definitely higher because it it got closer to the property. It's, it's gonna be reconstructed as it was approved.
Okay.
And, and there, it, it, there's nothing illegal going on here. I, I know that, you know, that that's a law, law term that likes to be thrown around, but nothing illegal. It was a mistake. The builder put, had the wrong property line. He did not have the right property line. He did not have the, 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 the map it flagged correctly. It was probably because he didn't call the survey out to actually stake it and give him his offsets. So he did not get his offsets, and so he built it in the wrong place. So as far as the encroachment of the foundation, that's something that Tom and I have been discussing. And I think it's a discussion with Tom to, to, as to whether we could keep that foundation. And basically, at grade, build a, like a plat, like a, a deck, like a, um, like a, like a stone patio there. That would be.
Variance.
That's what needs a variance. And at great.
Tiffany, I respected you, Tiffany, I respected you when I was talking. You, you know the rules. You know the rules. So if, if that's gonna need a variance, then we'll have to consider whether that has, we have to just, just completely rebuild that whole section or we have to start from scratch. I mean, I, I'm talking about a conversation I had with Tom. I mean, if, 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 if that was, if that was something that was actually, you know, you could live in it, sure. If that's something that you could walk down in, sure, but this is just a slab. It's, it's a pool deck.
It's a structure. Yeah, it's a structure.
Structure below grade. Yes, okay. So if you're gonna determine that it's, it's illegal, then that's fine. But from what Tom is saying, it, it's, it's, as of, as of the law, it is not a structure.
Hmm, it is a structure.
Okay, so then Tom's, Tom's determination that he has not come to finalize yet.
Well, I, my whole point of, the reason I asked for this case to be held was to give you guys the opportunity to be sure you had every variance you needed so we could consider it at a meeting and get a decision for you, this piecemeal. So that's why I made that suggestion.
Okay, I would like, can I address the Ms. Carlato and Mr.?
No, no, you can only address the board.
So I'm gonna address the board, thank you. So, and I just wanna clarify first of all, the pool house. So the pool house, um, space and and the, the pool house does not have a foundation, but a slab, a crawl space. And that has been inspected by the building department inspector, Tom Puleo. The pool house was built on top of this slab in the wrong spot. And we were well aware of that. In fact, as, as the project has been represented, we are correcting the pool house. We did not, uh, uh, how can I say that? We did not, um, resolve the issues at the, with the pool house because Tom Puleo told us that the moving of the pool house and all the issues that we could have long during the construction would have to be, um, finalized before the CEO. And he has acknowledged with us that we were gonna do and, you know, correct the mistakes along the way. But then COVID happened and we got the stop order. We have been blocked until COVID until July.
Which was COVID related.
Which is the.
I'm having trouble, I'm having trouble kind of following you and.
Okay, so I'm just.
But listen to me for a minute, please. If you move the pool house and leave the foundation, you're gonna have a lot coverage problem.
You write. No, it's included, it's included in the law.
Not once you move the pool house. The foundation counts as coverage, even if there's nothing over it.
We took away, we took away lot coverage to allow that to be appropriated.
Well, I, I wanna have the building inspector confirm that. We, we're gonna have to go back to the building inspector. It would still be a setback issue though, because you can't have something five feet, you can't have a structure five feet from the property line, no matter what it is.
We, we would, we, we wish that somebody would make that determination so that we could move forward. That's all we're doing here and Clive stated.
Well, Liz, Liz, that.
Yeah, we need to check.
I, I just mentioned as well for the record, there was a, a comment and, you know, I mean, I swore an oath and to represent honestly the situation from our perspective and we are doing our utmost to represent the truth and the situation that we find ourselves in. So, so we just want that for the record and, and, you know, we, we sincerely just want to do this in the right way and get this finished. And, and, you know, there is, that is the truth. I mean, I've sworn that that should be the truth and that is the truth.
We're trying to help you, we're trying to help you get a, a complete application in front of this board so these issues can be resolved one way or the other as soon as possible. And I don't see how you do that unless you hold the case, have Tom provide clarity on these other issues and you come back with the stuff you need. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, I mean, we granted these variances a year ago, so it's not our fault that you're back now.
Right.
We're not saying that it is your fault.
I'm just trying to make that clear, this, this idea that we've somehow, uh.
No, that, that's, no one's saying that.
I didn't, I didn't mean to give that impression to you, the board. I would just clearly.
Well, too many people talking.
That, that, I just, just, that wasn't, um, if that, that, if that was your interpretation, that wasn't my meaning that by any means that you have, uh, delayed this or or what have you. That's, that's not what I'm saying. We are where we are now. Um, the mistakes have happened. Mistakes. We have no ulterior motive to end up with something that wasn't approved. And where we are now is that I want to move forward so we can build what was approved.
Right, but that means you, you got, you gotta, you gotta abide by the, the rules, you know.
Yes, but then, but then what I, what I, what I, what I want from these meetings, what I want from this meeting is a very clear direction and what that is so we can come and deliver if we're gonna be adjourned to the next meeting. Because we just can't afford for this to go on any longer. This has gone on, you know.
But that's because you've made some mistakes.
I understand. I understand. Those are in the past, so now.
No, but as Susan's laying out, unfortunately, you didn't come to this meeting with all your ducks in a row yet. And so we have some work to do between now and the next meeting, so we encourage you to get, we'll talk to Tom. And so hopefully in the next meeting, everything will be clear. You'll have done everything you need to do and we can move towards.
Yeah, but you say ducks in a row, but in terms of what was agenda on the meeting, then yes, we do. If you want to ask us specific questions on those items on the agenda, we can address them.
Well, for one, just technically, for one thing, if the, the pool house is gonna be rebuilt in a new location, it needs to be indicated on the survey.
It is on the survey.
It is on the survey where it's existing, but not where.
There is also a little line that has been, uh, it was, it's on the survey that says where the pool house will see.
Cut back, I see it. Pool house to be cut back on the east side.
And the cutting that back will, will reduce the height of this structure.
By two feet, right?
Right.
Mine doesn't say any note about where it's being cut back. I see dotted line. Mine does not either. I don't have any reference to that. So we don't, maybe we don't have a current survey, maybe it's part of the problem.
Uh, what the survey was.
dated ten twenty-three twenty twenty.
No, uh, no, we have ten one twenty.
There's another, ten twenty-three twenty twenty, updated survey.
Yeah, but we don't, I don't have that. Does anyone have it? Oh, I have that. I have two surveys. Ten twenty-three twenty. Yeah, I only have one survey.
I don't have the survey and I don't have any idea where this pool is going with the pool house.
The pool's already there.
The pool house.
It's on the survey, Ham.
I don't have the survey.
Well, I can, I'll get an updated copy if it exists, so that's not a problem.
One, one other issue that I'd like to address is the vegetation. There isn't a vegetation plan that was approved. And it shows revegetating that whole property line and hopefully keeping everything alive.
It's my plan.
Can I make a suggestion once again that we get up-to-date documents, that we get direction from Tom, and that we move forward? Will this thing under advisement, get everything in a row so we can address all the issues at the December meeting?
Yeah, we're gonna have to do that. We're gonna have to ask for an adjournment. We'll meet with the building inspector. Hopefully we can wrap this up at our next meeting. I mean, the other point to be raised is if that foundation, which would be covered with something, a slab, then becomes a structure, it has a setback, but that's gonna have to be renoticed.
Correct.
Correct, Liz?
Yes, we have to hear from Tom on that, on whether it has to be, uh, get a variance because it's too close and then it would need to be renoticed, correct? So we'll have to ask, take a look at that.
Starting to sound like it's less expensive just to remove that, that foundation, that mistaken foundation.
Well, unfortunately, that, that foundation is, is a Q deck, which is a concrete deck with steel, so it, it's not as easy as it sounds. I mean, if it was just a foundation with a, like it's, like a floor joists.
It, it, it doesn't sound easy, but it sounds like the applicants really are anxious to get this thing moving again.
Oh, absolutely.
You have to notice this thing again. That's a process and, and it takes up time.
Well, like, can we, can, we actually, um, have an approval on, on the, on, on the variance for the house? And maybe just start to address the house at this point?
No, I think we're gonna, we wanna do this all at once. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn this until our next meeting.
Sub moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Building inspector, uh, the owner and the architect, if we need any further information, um, we'll get to you shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, can I get a motion then to, uh, open forty-one Main Street?
Something.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Carrie, do we have somebody to speak to forty-one Main Street?
Yes, Chris Kelly's here and so is Romney. Mars.
Christopher Kelly from Tumileth and Shea, Kelly Dubin and Cororral for the applicant, Romney Cromores. I've submitted a memorandum of law that goes through the central facts and the criteria for the grant of an area variance, but I'll review it briefly here as it's hours late. The subject property is located at forty-one Main Street. First floor of the main building is a retail space and the second floor is an apartment that's rented out. In the rear of the property is a, uh, small building approximately two hundred square feet, denominated a, um, garage on the survey, framed garage, but it's really a studio slash workspace that the owner has rented out, uh, for the last twenty years. Um, it is used as, uh, a space for a single person working. There's no plumbing in there, although there's electricity. Uh, and the applicant, the applicant was cited, uh, by the zoning enforcement officer for renting the space out and asked to legalize it. So we submitted an application to the planning board for site plan review, which the, uh, structures never had. And, uh, it was noted by Kathy Eisenman that variance was necessary because on the first floor in the Village Business District, uh, retail, uh, office space and or, um, studio space is not permitted. So we're here before you to ask for the permission to have a studio slash office space on the first floor in the Village Business District. This is, we're not asking to build anything new. This is merely to legalize what the status quo has been for the last twenty years. The application is not, or the, the hardship here is not self-created because I'm pretty sure that prior to, or when Romney purchased the property, um, back some twenty-five years ago, there was no limitation on, uh, uh, first floors in the Village Business District. Uh, no prohibition against offices and studios. There'll be no undue change in the character of the neighborhood. Again, this is something that's been there for a long time and, and been actually operating uh, as a rental space. Uh, I would point out that were she not renting it out, she could use this space herself for her own work needs. Right now she has a, uh, she does her own artwork, which is primarily, uh, in the medium of stained glass. She does it in a unfinished basement below the store. Uh, but she could conceivably use the space herself, but has chosen to rent it out, which makes the operation of the store and the building in general affordable for her. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but, uh, we respectfully request, uh, that the variance be granted.
I have a question, sorry, with respect to SECR, did Kathy make a secret determination for you on this matter yet?
I, you, you mean the planning board has. I'm not sure of that. I'm, I believe this would be an unlisted action. And I'm, I believe this would be an unlisted action, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, if it's unlisted, then we would need to, um, make sure?
I do, right?
Well, we have to check that. So, we usually check that with our village planner, Kathy Iseman. Um, and once she makes that determination, then we can, we can act. But first, we need to figure out the SECR before the board can act, just, just for the record.
Can I ask you one question, Chris?
Sure.
Will you limit the office use, first floor office use to the rear building so that it's not actually on the street?
Yes.
Okay. I'm fine. I know we have to wait for SECR to determine.
Okay, too.
I'm fine with it mainly because, I mean, it's not on the street. I mean, the, the main focus of that was to keep retail spaces on the street. This isn't on the street anyway, so it's a separate building.
Right, but let's see if there's anyone from the public. Anyone from the public wanna comment on 41 Main Street? I don't think there's anyone out there.
I don't know who this number is, the 917 number.
I think that's, uh, Safe Sag Harbor.
We could? I just asked to unmute them, see if they wanna talk. They don't want to.
No, okay. So, just to give you an indication, I think we have to wait for the SECR before we can make a ruling. And, um, I thought I saw that the planning board was considering something that had to do with parking.
Yes, do you need parking?
No, I don't, we don't need parking. Uh, and one of the, uh, arguments in favor of this application is that there are, will be three spaces created. Now, Kathy and I differ a little bit on this. She says, well, the spaces are, are there. Well, they're not actually there because they're not on any site plan, they're not in any approved, they're not required to be, uh, parking spaces. In fact, if we chose to close them off, we could. But by entering into a site plan application, uh, offering that up as three parking spaces that will be, uh, uh, confirmed as three parking spaces and preserved as three parking spaces. In essence, we are adding to the legalized, the legal parking in the village.
Yay.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, is that, is that, is that parking just available to the tenant and to the owner or to the public?
We, we could be convinced to, uh, uh, covenant to allow it to be used for the public.
I have no objection. That building has functioned for 25 years and the way it's been utilized is closer to Division Street. So, I have no objection.
Yeah, I have, I have no objection to this either. So, we, but we do have to adjourn it and get the SECR.
Or should it's on the back building, I have no objection.
Right, and then we could, uh, have a formal vote at our next meeting. Does that, that work, Liz?
Yes, that's perfect. I'll email Kathy right away and ask, um, for a SECR determination on this matter.
The next meeting for the record?
It's December 15th.
I should have known that, you've said it many times. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, then can I get a motion to adjourn 41 Main Street, waiting for a SECR recommendation from the planning board?
Some moved.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, it's Romany.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Romany.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to, uh, formal voting, uh, for decisions that we reached at the last meeting. We have three. The first one is 143 Bay Street.
Uh, this is an application to construct a second-story dormer addition to the existing single-family residence on site. Variances are required for the rear yard setback to, for the new dormer addition to 20.9 feet where 30 feet is required. Therefore, relief in the amount of 9.1 feet is required and skyplan exposure line is being protruded for a total volume of 351.17 cubic feet. Subject property is comprised of 11,775 square feet or 0.270 acres, is non-conforming with respect to lot area and has three front yards, one on Bay Street and two on Havens Beach Road. The board found that the additional protrusion into the skyplane, uh, is not substantial and no neighboring property owner subjected to the variance request at the hearing. The proposed second-story dormer addition is on the eastern part of the residence and will not be visible from Bay Street. The foregoing reasons and those cited in the written determination, the board found that the application met the five-part test and hereby grants the variances.
Great, could I get a motion to grant the variances just described by our attorney for 3143 Bay Street? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who made the motion and who seconded?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yeah.
All opposed? Okay, unanimous decision. Next, 68 Water Street.
This is an application for the installation of a Kohler Model 14 RCA L emergency backup generator requiring numerous variances because the subject property is a condominium unit at the Sag Harbor Villas comprised of 1.6 square feet where zoning requires 20,000 square feet. The proposed generator will be properly screened both visually and audibly by both landscaping and a small enclosure from adjoining property owners and the street. The proposed generator, um, is similar in size to the already existing air conditioning units along the front yards of most of the units located in the Villas. And the board found that any improvement to this extremely undersized parcel would likely require variances. As a result and based on the findings set forth in the written determination, the board found that the application met the five-part test and hereby grants the variances.
Great, can I get a motion to grant the variances just described by our attorney for 68 West Water Street, Unit Number Six?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, unanimous. Uh, next, 62 Franklin Avenue.
This is an application to construct a new first and second floor addition to the rear of the existing residence requiring setback and pyramid relief under the Village Code. Subject parcel is 7,525 square feet and located in the R20 zoning district and is non-conforming with respect to lot area. Applicants seeking relief to allow the proposed side yard setback for the two window wells proposed on the east side of the addition to be 7.6 feet where 10 feet is required. And to allow the proposed addition to protrude into the skyplane by volume of 870 cubic feet or zero cubic feet is permitted. The ridge of the addition will be two feet lower than the ridge of the existing residence. However, the project still requires pyramid relief for the proposed dormers and roof shape. Specifically, the addition will protrude into the skyplane on the western side, 352 cubic feet, western dormer, 80 cubic feet, the eastern roof, 150 cubic feet, and the eastern dormer by 288 cubic feet. Therefore, although the relief is for a total of 870 cubic feet, represents four smaller amounts spaced out in four separate areas on the addition rather than one larger intrusion. Based on the findings set forth in the written determination, the board found the applicant met the five-part test and hereby grants the variances.
Could I get a motion to grant these variances just described by our attorney for 62 Franklin Avenue?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed, unanimous.
Tim, you, we just have to go back to, um, 205 Division Street. So, we can make a motion to table it, because I don't, they didn't?
No one showed up.
Some move.
My second.
Thank you, Susan. All right.
Okay, well, we have a, a lot of adjournments and no decisions. So, we're gonna have a long meeting next month. Hopefully, we won't have too many new applications. Could I get a motion? Did I already ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting tonight?
No, you didn't.
Some move.
No, it, it doesn't matter, Tim, because we're not being able to, uh, gather his families for the holidays. We're not gonna have much else to do, so a nice long meeting will be.
Be for yourself.
Party, right?
Who seconded the motion?
I think about five of us did, but I was?
Somebody seconded the motion to adjourn this.
I seconded it, I seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, Liz, thank you, Barbara.
Have a great night.
Happy Thanksgiving.